Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Lincoln County Commission Regular Session, March 3rd, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes, Leslie. I'll second that.
Alright, all members are present. Oh yeah, we have to vote on it. Too big of a hug. Do I have the motion? Second, all the favors, they are.
Ah.
Okay. Alright, we have one person in the public comment. Erin Andrews. Do you want to come on up and...
Sure.
And you're with Appalachian Service Project?
Yes.
Are you the folks of Hartz?
Mm-hmm, exactly. Um, so I just wanted to give a little bit of a brief explanation for people who don't know, um, what Appalachian Service Project is. The home repair organization, and we bring in volunteers for about seven weeks in the summer. Um, and we have a staff that stays there yearf- or stays there throughout the summer, and basically, um, directs the volunteers in the home repair projects that we do. So we do a wide variety, um, and I actually have a little bit of just kind of information from last summer. Um, we did three foundation repairs, twenty-six floors, nine walls, one ceiling, um, twelve homes with insulation, um, eleven interior painting, four doors and windows, twelve porches, um, four drainage ditches, some wiring, plumbing, that sort of thing. Um, and we served a total of twelve families, so thirty-nine individuals, um, fifty-five seniors, so that's fifty-five years and above, um, seventeen youth, six disabled, and, um, generally, we give about an estimate of thirty thousand dollars invested into the community. So that's building supplies, um, sending our volunteers to local grocery stores, or ice cream shops, or restaurants, um, with Skeeters a lot, I'm sure, in that area. Um, and so, just kind of a, an overview picture of the work that we're able to do in one summer, um, which I think is pretty awesome. So, we're back again this summer. We will, um, host our volunteers and staff at Hartz PK through eight. And I've been trying to spread the word, just kind of putting up applications, flyers, in different locations, um, just letting people know it's a free home repair service. And so, there is an application process, and our staff goes out and kind of selects the homes based on need in the area, um, trying to work on the most emergency home repair projects first, um, but also taking into consideration our budget and things like that. So, um, if, if people have any questions, um, feel free to come talk to me afterwards. And we do have applications at Hartz PK through eight, at the Hartz Community Center, um, at Big Ugly Community Center. And so there's, I'm trying to set a couple different locations where people can, can pick up those applications and then get them into us, so.
Now, you said you, are you staying at the Hartz pre-K eight, or, so you're not staying at the Community Center?
Correct, yeah.
Last time where you stayed at the?
Community Center.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there is a little bit of a miscommunication, I think, with that. Um, and we, we hadn't decided at the end of the summer where we were going yet. And so, um, this fall, it was kind of working through what we think the best location is for us, and it, um, really just worked out better, I think, for us and for our volunteers and staff to be working in the PK through eight school.
How many do you have staying there, Erin Andrews?
Um, it's four staff throughout the summer, and then about, it's anywhere from sixty to eighty volunteers, um, just kind of depending on, on how much demand there is for that, so.
Where was the applications, uh, available at, Hartz Community Center, Big Ugly?
Hartz Community Center, Big Ugly, the school.
And the school.
Mm-hmm. And if you all know of other locations, that would be good for me to just plant a stack of applications, um...
You said you had senior citizens in the center?
I don't, I don't.
That would probably be one I would think of that you didn't mention, is because if you had your seniors dad or their law, you'd probably pick up that.
Where, where is that?
That's just, uh, south on Route 10, I love the school, it's on the, where the old Pearl'sburg School used to be, the Tri-Missouri, it's, uh, it's the senior citizens center.
Okay, perfect. I will, I will do that. That's great.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Be careful on the road, Erin Andrews.
We've got to get funding.
I was gonna say, if, would it be helpful, I don't know, I could leave like a stack of business cards if people feel like they might want.
Okay.
I don't know. If you want to contact me.
Thank you.
Run into anyone, just let me know, so. Alrighty, and I should get back before the roads get crazy. I appreciate it.
Can you say?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this Jack, someone to him? Do you want to speak, Jack? Okay, you signed in at public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, um... Lindsay, did you want to speak tonight, last week?
No. Um...
Okay.
Like always, early.
Mike, we'll go ahead and get to you, in case you need to sit down.
I'll be brief. Um, I have just one drawdown tonight, and I brought an extra copy to sign away, you guys can keep it on the spot here, as far as that goes. And it's out of, uh, Lincoln County Commission Local Funds, and it's for the Alcoa Water Project. And it includes a couple invoices from Thrasher Engineering, uh, for six thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, and one invoice from Griffith and Associates for accounting invoice, which actually, his invoice was from about a year ago, to be honest, because he just hadn't been processed yet, through the local drawdowns yet, and it was for four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. So the total draw is six thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Summon it.
Okay, all favor on. Yes.
There is approximately about twenty-three thousand remaining on that one. There is a typo, I would call a typo, you guys already paid some on their design work on Alcoa, two thousand and eleven. And quite frankly, you guys are much closer than what you thought you were, as far as that goes. Uh, there's about twenty-three thousand remaining, as far as what's obligated, as far as that goes. And I saw it on the back page of that.
So this was money that the commission has already offered?
Yeah, yeah. But that, you'll see the very last page, it shows what's remaining, as far as what's obligated. With that being said, um, they are, this is like the beginning of March, they're doing some additional work, getting ready to, because they had an overrun, in the sense of they can do additional line, addition, distance that way, and they're working way through that, what is, what's economical and fits, as far as what, you know, number of people and funds available and things like that, so. As that goes, it may be another month and a half of work that they're doing as they go, but I would think by April, we'll be sure.
So you're leaving us this copy?
Yeah, one copy for you, and I can... And as for the next, um, recent two doesn't have their meeting card. You guys all welcome to the, you want to come in?
Okay.
See careful.
So you keep that. Rick, do you want to go ahead and do yours?
You want one in PSD first, or? No.
You're here to talk about a couple things.
I am, I am. Um, I, let me talk about farmland.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, because there are probably more questions to that part. They can, I listen, I listen. Um, I just wanted to do a couple things about it. Uh, the mission is to protect that Alcoa farmland, ensure that it stays as farm, it doesn't get swallowed with anything else. It's what we've been trying to do from the beginning. Uh, I think there's also probably an element of food security, uh, supporting things in the county, the community values and farming, uh, supporting the, uh, farmer's markets that we've got going on, those kinds of things in the county. I did a check about farmland protection boards, there's twenty-two counties in the state that have, most of them border Virginia, that are there in that part of the state. Um, and we're sort of all by ourselves down here in Lincoln County. And last, through, uh, the end of two thousand and fifteen, there were a hundred and eighty-three easements statewide that protected twenty-three thousand six hundred and seventeen acres. And in all that, there has been twenty-three million dollars in federal money that's coming to the state and going to those counties in order to match in some way or another, you know, different proportions, depends on the sort of those things. Uh, we didn't make it with the first one. Uh, the board sort of feels that it definitely has been a learning process for them. Um, the second ti- the second one, should we do a second one? Should probably both take much less time and cost a whole lot less. And I think the cost is because we had those hurdles we had to go through the first time. Um, we had this big problem with the mineral issues, where the federal and state thinks that you couldn't have severed minerals. Um, we were able to get that changed, we had Senator Rockefeller and Representative Ray Holmes who got involved in that, sort of helped, helped push that forward. And now, uh, at the state level, people are willing to accept, even if there's several severed minerals, if the mineral development is believed to be, and this is the, what we're using, remote as being negligible, then even though there's severed minerals in the property, an easement can go forth with it. Uh, the other problem we have is with the Yellow Book appraisal. The state organization had just two appraisers that they had recognized that could do it. Um, we used one of them, uh, the appraiser we got, the appraisal we got back, our lawyer and the board both felt was a bogus appraisal. Uh, that meant we had to do another one, uh, we had to jump through all these hoops because there weren't any people that the state had approved, so we got them to approve some other people, and that. So anyhow, uh, like I said, I think, um, we definitely had roadblocks with the time it took us to move there, and that added to the cost. Um, the other thing the board is doing at our next meeting is we're looking for other funding streams besides the federal funding stream that could be used as matches. So it could possibly be that we could get federal monies, other kinds of land trust monies that could help decrease the amount of the money that we put. So, you didn't ask me to talk, you asked me to bring you some numbers. So, this is...
When is the next board meeting?
It's the fifteenth of March. So, I think this is pretty accurate. Um, what we did is we went through all the old invoices and tried to figure out, because there's some things that are general, and there's some things that were specific to McCombs. So, these are all the ones that are specific to McCombs. Um, the first thing is administrative stuff, we have engaged with Saddleback Services, which is a group in Monroe County, a man, a husband and wife, who are engaged by several other farmland protection boards, sort of help move the process along. And as we got closer to pulling this all together, we thought it would be valuable to have some help, some pictures done, because we had...
It's like fourteen is when we started using?
Fourteen is when we started funding then. And one of the things that has happened, uh, it, because of that, is that's helped us decrease our lawyer fees, because they could do things, if they knew about it, so the lawyer hadn't, wouldn't have to do research. So we've got, we've spent, uh, over four thousand dollars on the administrative stuff, and we figured that all of that cost was pretty much for the McCombs property. With our, with that lawyer that we've engaged. I went through and looked at all the invoices and separated out ones that were McCombs from just general kind of work that was done first. So, there's been, since two thousand and eleven, over six thousand dollars specifically from McCombs. Out of over twenty-four thousand dollars, since we started in two thousand and nine, that cover the Florida range, so. We had two appraisals, normally you just have to have one appraisal, so that was six thousand dollars. And then we had to engage a geologist to come up with this negligible minerals. So that's what we ended up spending, nineteen thousand dollars. Pretty much.
The bogus one you're talking about, was, why was it bogus?
Well, one of the, and our lawyer's not here, he understood it better than I do. But with these appraisals, you had to, you had to look at comparable properties. The first appraiser didn't look at any properties in Lincoln, his properties were all down in Monroe County, or something like that. And one of the properties, it was the same property that had been sold, like, and he used that property. Has won, had two times, so, as the three comparable properties, one was the same property. Uh, so, we didn't feel that it made sense not to use properties in Lincoln County to compare McCombs property. So that's how we ended up getting this other thing. So that's why we got there.
I mean, you broke out, so, since this started, the total legal was twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-nine for everything.
For every, through the end of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, what other fees and audit could we do?
Audit, every year, obviously.
Audits, we have audits every year, uh, so we pay firm audits, and then we pay... Mary, can you remember what percent you have to pay the state? The state also charges you, is it six percent or something like that? Then we have to pay the state auditor's department six percent, or whatever we pay our auditor. Uh, there's a two hundred dollar fee to go along to the West Virginia Association of Farmland Protection Builders.
I mean, I think what we, I mean, I appreciate that you broke this down, but I think what we wanted to know, or what I wanted to know is, from the beginning, how much have we collected from this tax?
Oh, okay.
And how much do we have? So, really what?
We've got two hundred and fifty.
But what total has been spent out of there? Even though it's not directly, it's sort of, since we haven't gone any use of it, so.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Okay, I thought you specifically wanted what we'd spent on the whole process for McCombs.
I think we need both, I think, I like looking at, I mean, I think that tells us a lot about that piece of property, like, and things like that, but...
I mean, my guess, just off the top of, yeah, I shouldn't guess, when it comes to dollars, that's not a good thing to do. I mean, I think we had to spend sixteen hundred for this year's appraisal.
Audit, you mean?
Audit. Uh, before that, we were spending eight hundred. I'm trying to think of the years we did that.
So, other than the audits, the only additional thing you've really had to pay out of that, besides what you have listed here?
Right.
Has, has there been any, you checked on these other counties that are doing this? Has there anybody that's stopped the program, as long as I stopped it? Do you know?
No.
Nobody stopped it?
There have been some counties that have formed a farmland protection board where nothing's happened. Yeah, that Computon is one of them. I don't know whether they're collecting the money, I don't know if, they, they formed a board, and that was it. If the board hasn't done anything, they don't want it, pretty easily.
So you're meeting again on the fifteenth?
Yes, we are. So you'd like, so I should come back?
Well, I mean, if that's all that it is, it's just the additional audit.
I think it's pretty, it, pretty much it's the audits, it's the association dues, it's been a little bit of mileage, to go to a couple conferences in the state.
That's all.
I mean, nobody's paid, nobody's, you know, like...
When, when your audits, it shows that, you know, there's signatures.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, when we have, that's all.
Yes, we have all of your audits.
Okay.
It's in the file, it's in the F box.
Yeah, that's the correct place.
Actually, it's, it's in the correct, yeah, yeah, I mean...
It's a start.
It is. What would you all like to do? Do you want me to?
No.
Do a total?
No.
No, I mean, we, if we got that, that audit, I mean, there's audits we could do.
I mean, do you, I mean, you have, you, you haven't really met since you...
No, we have not.
On the fifteenth, and I'm gonna try to be there, and we're gonna fill up, fill up the board, and tend this, and...
And, and we should, at that meeting, we should be getting some information about other sources, other funds, and...
Well, I, I think that's one of the things we needed to do, because I think when we went into this, we kind of had the assumption that we were gonna pick up a lot of it, and now they're kind of, it's not that late, so. I think that's one of the things that we usually has already. Uh, and have you identified any other forms you want to go after?
Well, we want to make sure that we have the, we have to do that. There have been some suggestions of a couple farms, um...
I guess I have kind of an issue with soliciting people to, for easements.
Well, the way we got it, we've run things in the newspaper. Uh, we have a trifold colored brochure that is in different places, I'm not sure where it is right now, but it's, you know, it sort of says here, the benefits, if you're interested, let us know. I mean, it's also a word about people.
That's kind of an appropriate way to do it, I wouldn't want, you know, us, when I say, hey, guess what, I give you this money for this, I think what they...
Right, yeah, yeah. And the board had felt that we needed, we haven't done any more promotional about it, because they really felt they needed to get one, and they felt, so they could better, you know, the farmer said, well, tell me, we could answer it correctly, other than leading people. Just go ahead.
You really can't get a contract with somebody, because you don't know what the final appraisal is gonna be, you need to know what...
Although I think, we talked about the next time being much more, since we know that the federal dollars are tied to the soils, that would be one of the first things we would do. If we would look at the, the federal soil maps that show you all these different realms that...
Which you have now, that I don't, that you didn't, when you started this.
Well, we didn't understand how critical it was. You know, so, we, if we have this X, Y, Z farm, we could look at the soils, and we'd know right away. And the other thing you could do is you could get an easement, not on the whole farm, but on a specific piece of the farm, like, the soils or the...
You know, just thinking about, you know, you think, you hope that, you know, you look at those properties that, that you, that'll ever match what we're doing, and it could, you know, and then it's, then you could get more properties and not spend a lot of money, people's money, but, I mean, our taxpayers' money versus what the feds is spending, you know, because... I think when we went into that, my assumption was, kind of like this, you know, that's a pretty good deal, you know, that, but it runs up, you know, not even, but I think you're, you're right, I think looking at the soil character of each of these places, as far as how it relates to the federal fund, is, is one of the important things, I think, we need to prepare, because that means that soil is where the cost of local people are. I mean, it makes just the cost of local people less than what they're asking.
Exactly, exactly. And the other thing that can happen, although just like the soil thing changed, there are things where, okay, let's say I have a hundred acres, and you're gonna buy sixty as easement, or forty left. I could donate those forty to be part of you, and get some sort of a tax write-off. It's a little unclear exactly what that tax write-off would be, because that's changed. As the farm dollars go into Congress, what's allowed to be used as a tax write-off is, is changing. Okay.
Camp Lake Field.
Camp Lake Field, alright, hopefully easier. Um, here's a proposal from the Camp Development Authority, which is, which is appointed by the commission. And one of the ideas is that to be proactive, we ought to get somebody a little younger than the person who's doing it now to understand it, and, you know, all the ins and outs, and so eventually, that person might take over. But I think we're gonna have to pay somebody else to do it, you know, if somebody's gonna do it for free. I know, I've been looking, no luck. So anyhow, the idea would be that we would, um, hire what we call a supervisor in training for the summer, who would be there in each one of the nine lines, but would also, um, work in tandem with me when it comes to figuring out how to feed people, transportation, promotion, uh, the finances, the maintenance, all that kind of stuff. Uh, with the thought that, okay, this person could step up and eventually take over that whole thing. So the proposal is, um, we're thinking maybe it might be a total of ninety-eight hours, uh, thirteen dollars an hour, and then there'd be a match for this. So we're looking at about sixteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. And the thought was we would handle it, likely handle it in ways where, where the county commission's bookkeeping system, they could issue all that stuff, and then Camp Lake Field, we'd pay for everything, including the land. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to run, uh, an ad for the position in the newspaper, uh, looking for these kind of requirements. They'd have to have a valid lifecard and first aid certification, and we're looking for somebody who's got some experience with outdoor programs, and committed to work with children, and has some leadership skills, uh, and would also commit to work in beyond this this summer.
When do you want to run, just to get the shot, and figure out when you want to sign it?
If you guys will approve it, we would run it, depending, if you want one week, two weeks, we'd run it next, when, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Do you think on something like that, that's a two week?
It's a two weeks, it's early.
I could think it's only a good year.
Normally, the motion is to go ahead and, 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 so...
They're all in paper, aye?
And then we would bring, we'd do an interview process, we'd bring back a nomination to you all, and say, there's the person who proposed it. You'd like a contest?
Thanks, that was good.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Alright, the next thing we have on here is Lincoln PSD. Hey, I was wondering if you could give us a little brief update on what you know that's going on up there with the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars? Have you heard anything, is there?
No, as far as the two hundred and sixty thousand that was given to the Lincoln PSD, and Gary, you're the president of Lincoln PSD here, um, as everyone knows, that money was put in place so we wouldn't lose federal funds on the Little River project, the Bulger project. Um, that, I have sent that on to, um, the judicial system, and I called probably four or five months ago, and that was kind of battered around into, um, I don't know how to name it correctly, um, the organization that, um, Gary, what's the, uh, the organi- the organization that Tracy wrote, the USDA? See, all these, all these places, like the Armored Warriors, USDA, all these people, they have their own attorneys. So, that's, that's where I was directed, and that's where it is.
So when you sent letters, I mean, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, so I don't know what happened over there. Yeah, and a lot of people are asking me, and I don't know what to tell them. But, so, when you said you sent letters, you sent it to the USDA?
I sent it to the US Attorney's Office in the Southern District, Blue Pillings Office.
Can you get Mary a copy of that email, just to put in the file, that you did that? But you don't know if there's been any type of investigation, or?
No, I was, I was told in communication that that was handed off to the USDA. But understand, I mean, everyone needs to understand this, if that money would not have went to those projects, we would not have those projects, we wouldn't have Bulger, we wouldn't have Little River. This would be, I mean, a non-issue button.
I mean, I think everybody knows that, but we just, I mean, people are wanting to know what happened to the money to begin with.
Right, I understand that, and, uh, I can, I can write another letter, and so can the Lincoln PSD. They could write, they could do the same thing.
Did you, uh, it was my understanding through the grapevine, that Teats and Associates was supposed to do an audit over there, or one of those, so you haven't got a copy of the audit to show?
Uh, they're their own individual entity, so if you, we need an audit, we have to ask them.
I mean, I think one was done when we went to the PSD, but wasn't that part of that, when they started to look into it, that they were gonna have somebody audit? I mean, shortly there's been an audit done over there.
Well, that was what I think the Lincoln PSD said, that they were, they were gonna have an audit, but that wasn't what the county commission said, that they were gonna do. The understanding when we went to Charleston was that there was going to be an audit performed by the Lincoln PSD, and that was...
So it was up to them to contract whoever to do it, or...
Gary, you aware of any audits been done?
That all happened pre-me, my understanding was you all had dealt with it, we were, people are asking what's going on, and...
Well, I think that's the thing that I've been questioning about it, you know, what happened to the original two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and I've been telling them, well, we took all the steps necessary to get the investigation started, or people looking into it, things of that nature, and that's the last I know, you know, I haven't heard anything back from anybody about it. You know, Tracy, I've worked with her before on things, and I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know why the Department of Justice would send it to the Department of, I mean, the USDA, I mean, it doesn't make sense, because they're not, they're more of a, they're not law enforcement agency, they're basically one that'll be phoned, and just like us, you know, that we act as a conduit for monies and things like that, and I think that's what they do too, so... But I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, I think it's important that when we take, you know, those taxpayers' money, and, and, and have to replace two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, that we do have an idea of what happened to the other, and if, if, I, it's just a suggestion of mine, that if you've been president of the board over there, that you may take back your board and address that question that we had, because we need to have some definition of where we're at with that, and if you could find that out for us, I think it'd be important for us to know. Because I, I just really hate to keep saying, well, we're doing something about, and then not knowing exactly what we're doing, you know, and I think that would help, so if you could look at it from your end of, and you could probably find out if they had an audit done before you got there, and what the results of that were, of course, and things of that nature, so...
If you want, I can, I'll contact...
For some reason, I don't know, because they're Teats, I think they're in it.
What I wanna do, if you want, what I can do is, I'll contact the US Justice Department, the Southern District, and ask them, throw away, ask them what, you know, where was this handed off? You understand what I'm saying? To see, you know, at what stage is it in?
Well, I think...
I mean, I had, I actually, I mean, I had a discussion, and one of the comments that were made was, you know, whenever the audit's performed, you know, how, you know, proving that there was wrong, and was that money being used to, you know, pay, like, pay bills? And I mean, and I think that that's what the audit was to bring up, and I know that since the USDA was involved, they were to be coming, though, and that's where I left it. Because, I mean, after that, my hands were off, there was nothing else that I...
I think, I think what needs to be done is probably the president ought to go and get in contact with Department of Justice, and ask them that, you know, just if, if, if it's okay, is to, I'll make a motion that we send it to the Department of Justice, and the Tracy round at, at USDA, and ask them if they could give some, you know, some kind of an update, or just to make sure that we're all on the same page, as far as what we're doing, things of that nature. I don't know how you wanna word that, but I mean, basically, it'd be an informational letter, asking them, you know, we wanna make sure that this, this particular situation is before you, and that it is something that you're looking into, things of that nature, and in the meantime, if Gary can find out what he's trying to, I'll maybe come back and talk with him next time, I guess. And I'll make a motion, we'll go and send that to Department of Justice, ask them if they, you know, as far as if that is a continuing investigation, or if they come to any determination of what happened to that money.
And for them to give, to give us a...
Right, right, and I think that's important, because, because I, I really think you need to deal with this thing on paper, and not just talk, because, you know, you know ourselves, we all talk to people all the time, and they tell us things, and if we don't have it on paper, though, we don't know, you know what I mean?
Well, I understand.
At least we can, this way, because, you know, we do have a question still before the prosecutor, as to whether the, what we did with that money was a legal transaction, and we haven't heard back from him on that either. But I do think that, and let's, let's make sure we keep a paper trail of everything we do, that way, if there comes some question in the future, as far as what happened, we'll be able to go back to it and say, right, here's what happened, and things of that nature, so...
As far as the legality is about us giving the money, that was made clear by the Public Service Commission, at our time.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
I know you wanted to check with him, but...
But, so I, I make that motion.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
If you can get Mary that letter, then I can follow up with whoever you sent it to, and see, okay, all right. Okay, under unfinished business, we have, um, so where do you want to approve the petition, the boundary line of retaining the, and Jim Gaylord has not got that to us yet. I think Darryl met with him again yesterday.
About two and a half hour meeting. He found case law, or a certain court has acted on the matter before, and become legislators to move the line, so it looks like it's all moving in the right direction. He just wants to check out all some of the legalities of notifying the Reds that, as far as the process, maybe service, summons, or maybe the public action.
Is he, is he having a meeting set up with you guys, or is he wanting to meet with you all anymore, or you know, that's past that point?
I think it's past that point, I, I think it's just a matter of putting the petition together, and, and finding out the legal process.
Because, you know, I, I really thought when we talked last time, and I think most of the people that were here from Tony thought that we'd have some kind of answer, and I know sometimes that's not...
Depending on the process, what, what he told us was that it still may even be finished before the election, so, the vote can get registered, the addresses can get registered, whatever you do there.
Well, I think we as commissioners, if we run into Jim, we ought to press upon the importance of, of being on the front, I think it's feeling necessary to give us an answer.
We have our next meeting in seventeen, so maybe by then he'll...
Just go ahead and ask him what he can, maybe, if he's not...
Okay.
Unless he gets everything finished, and if he does, then he's capable.
Okay, under new business, you all looked over, any questions? Did you have a bucket baseball team, or did I know about your budget?
No, I had a, it was so long ago, I don't know what it was, I mean, how much money it was.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new business?
I'm looking for the, the new business, I'll say.
Okay, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, under open discussion, I just wanted to mention a couple things, we have budget hearings Monday, starting at nine. You want, can you be here?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're gonna do them every thirty minutes, yes, so, and another thing I wanted to mention and whatnot here, the Moore Road, I've been, people called me again this week about it. We sent a petition to the State Road, or the Department of Hallways, to have it added onto their mapping, state road system, but we haven't heard anything back, correct?
Correct.
So I guess we probably need to try to get a hold of them, you know?
I have, if anybody has any con, contact person at the Huntington office, I've called these two numbers, I've called the main switchboard, I've called everybody, I leave messages, nobody will call me back, but... I mean, I know some people with West Ham, but I don't know a lot of Huntington, you know, somebody at Huntington, because it has to come through their regional...
Yeah, but it usually goes, usually goes to the secretary, they filter the cause.
Yeah, I can't speak to you, but you have...
I just was speaking, you know, historically, talking with them about adding roads that aren't on the system, they just basically said they're doing more pouring on it. Because every time I talk with them, they say that, of course, this is a road that was, tax money was spent on before, so I think that puts it in a different category than someone that wants a road to gravel to pave that's not on the system, and things like that, I think this is, at one time, evidently was on the system, there was tax money spent on this road, and so I think in approaching that, that's what we need to talk to them about, and say, look, this is not, this is more of an abandoned road than it is one that was never on the system, and one that never was, you know, some of these roads to cemeteries and things like that were gravelled with state funds and things like that, and local funds, but, you know, somewhere back, I think it was when Governor Manchin was in, they changed a lot of, I'm not sure it was Governor Manchin, I don't blame him for it, but it wasn't him, but they stopped all that, even taking gravel to cemeteries to help people get purse in and out, and things like that, they stopped that, so... And that was the same time that they stopped the, working on, assuming new road care and things like that, but I think, like I say, when, if KK talks to them, just say, you know, look, there was some state money spent on this road before.
Well, I've talked to three or four people down there when this started, and they said that it, they went back and they came down where it was, it was never on there, but I don't know, I know, know, it was block pop, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, so they got the asphalt from somewhere, yeah, somebody put it down, so, I mean, I think that it's one of those things that medicine, we call the speak, things speaks for itself, you know, if, if, if there's a, a suture kit in the middle of the valley after we get through doing surgery, and you take an X-ray and you see that, then it speaks for itself, somebody left a suture kit in the valley, okay? And then, and I think that's what we're looking at with more road, is the fact that somebody paved that road, and somebody, you know, and I'm sure somebody working to do all, their district area probably is involved in it too, so... I think it's just a matter of, you know, approaching them and saying, look, you know, these, these people are gonna fall off the hill over there, they don't get something done.
Always getting higher, that's why they're...
And I think with the monies that they're talking about bringing through, that Congressman Jenkins talked about, or these people talked about, as far as fixing the roads and things of that nature, that road's a perfect place that where that money should be spent, and, you know, I think, you know, talking with the regional people in Huntington's a good idea, and then, then, you know, if the, we, there's other people we could talk to, we may, we may even just have to talk to the governor about it, and just say, look, you know, this, this state's had tax money spent on it before, even though it's not on the system, we could bring you the asphalt and show you it was, and see if he can do something, if we can't get the regional people to work on it, and, and we may, you know, we may be able to talk with Paul Maddox in the Transportation Department, and, you know, it comes down to that, I'll, I'll check on my son, he works for them, and see if he can talk to them about it, because then, sure, so... But I, but I would prefer to do it through the local agencies if we could, so...
Does anybody have anything else in terms of discussion?
Yeah, um, ARC power funds are getting ready to come up, and I think it's gonna be released, is my understanding, within probably the next month. And in order to really get some of this money, you know, we're talking about the water projects, sewer projects, you have to have a, kind of like a, a three-page summary, basically, of what's, you know, what, what it is that you're gonna do, and then dive into that, as you go, it has to be selected. So I was gonna encourage, see if we could draft a letter, encourage the Lincoln PSD to maybe draft a couple of these, one for the Lower Motor River Water Project, and one for the Allen Creek Sewer Project, spoke with President McCausley earlier on today, and I think they have intentions of doing that. I would also, and I also talk with the people at Region Two, and what you're gonna talk to tomorrow, and she asked me, the county commissioner, would want to do something of that nature, probably gonna help solicit money for these projects, and I told her, I said, you know, I'll talk to them, if we do, and we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and you'll be able to talk to Kathy tomorrow, and, you know, if you want to...
The last time that I, we received any ARC money that I remember was, the Governor Manchin, the special chair of the ARC, and we got the money for the Ten Mile Project, we got, I think, one of them made from the ARC for the Ten Mile Project, so, you know, they're familiar with us, Tracy was involved with that also, the USDA, but they usually like to limit their contributions, time we got to limit for the Ten Mile Project, they usually like to limit it to a million dollars, and this is other funds you're talking about, so I don't know if you'd like to see what...
Right, these are new, these are buying new stuff.
But I know, at that time, we were really lucky to get a million and a half instead of a million dollars for the Ten Mile Project, it was one of the biggest grants they'd ever given, I think it was the biggest grants they'd ever given, I would say, too, so... But, yeah, we gotta look at all these potential funding sources, especially with the government, the sewer project over at the Allen Creek, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be some designated monies for sewer projects instead, because the water and sewer are two different things when you look at the monies available, and we've always historically went after the water and, and, of course, at the time, there was some playing floor at Allen Creek and things like that, but I think that that's something we need to change emphasis on, as far as keeping water projects high, you'd also gonna look at increasing the value of the Allen Creek Sewer Project.
Just like what you said, the people I were talking to yesterday, I think they're gonna be submitting that different, you know, entities are gonna be submitting, they said, the bigger projects are gonna be, like, the big bulk of the money is gonna go after those bigger projects initially, so... As soon as we get our stuff together, and as soon as they, they post it, then we can send it in, that's it, that's all I have.
Well, I wanted to remind you too, that's what I, there's going to be a town community meeting, I think that's what they're calling it, a community meeting in Rockville, at Duval, in the cafeteria, on the fifteenth of this month at seven, to discuss flood mitigation money up there in the area, there's a grant, twelve million dollars is out there, and they have all the grants due.
Who's approved?
It's just the state, Allen is, Allen, the nine-one-one emergency service is actually gonna do the grant, the grant due at the fifteenth, and it, this study that Army Corps of Engineers, a hundred thousand dollars study...
What, what?
Okay, that's, that's already been approved, because, you know, they're gonna start on it, that's gonna be a piece of this grant application that will help us hopefully get it, that's one of the things that, is if we have the study...
If we get a little ballroom, or...
Right, if we have the study already, that'll help us hopefully with the grant, one thing they also suggested we do is have a community meeting to get people up there that affected over and over again, to see if they're, would be interested in a buyout if we get some flood mitigation money, and there's applications that we've got. Rick Hilton is helping a lot of, working on...
Did you see that years back?
Yes, I think, I think there were five people up there, but they, so...
So, we'll, we'll get, can we get that on down, like, send out an email on that, March the fifteenth, the seventh?
Fifteenth at seven, and Allen's gonna take the big digital sign and put it up there to tell everybody what it is, and he's just gonna try to get some applications of interest, that'll probably help us.
I'm sure there'll be, I'm sure there'll be a lot of people there, I know one better than Jim, that's Kev too, there'll be a lot of people there.
So I think Rick, Hilton, Allen, some of the folks up to the emergency service are gonna work together on the grant, to make sure we get everything in it, and that's it, I just...
I was just gonna mention, I, I didn't meet with the community correction board and record board up in there a while back, and there's, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good question, you know, the prosecutor is there, as well as Mr. Swanson, and they're talking about this, things as far as doing Medicaid and things of that nature, that I think would generate some income, because then, and I was supportive of that, because it may save us some money later on, on this situation, if you can see this. And they have a structure set up where, I don't want everybody knows on it, mainly, everybody's hired through local account, and, you know, everything's dealt through that account, and things of that nature. But I do think they're looking at the, the efficiency of what they're doing, and they're, they're having the same problems, I mean, I heard the same thing as far as money's drying up from the Supreme Court, and this and that, and so, but, that's about all I have on that. I will say that I did talk with a reporter from the ZET today, concerning the bill that's up, to give the coal severance money back to the coal operators, and all I can say is, what a bunch of malarkey. It's like I told this fellow, I said, it's like someone robbing from the poor to pay the rich, you know, we have all these people down here out of work that are coal miners, and, you know, give, did their whole life working for these guys, and we get, our coal severance now is what, half what it was before, or something of that nature, and they're talking about, and I told him, we're mandated by the state to pay this jail bill, which we've been paying it out of coal severance, and now the same people that mandate us to pay this bill are up there taking the only funding we have for this bill away from us, to give it back to the coal operators. We're not talking about giving it to the miners that don't have a job now, we're talking about giving it to the coal operators, and I told, I was telling him, you know, it don't make sense, I mean, what, you know, what we could do with two hundred thousand dollars is for the people... what we could do with two hundred thousand dollars is for the people is a lot more, they wouldn't even pay attention to two hundred thousand dollars. And then they're talking about dividing this up among all the big rich coal operators and give them, saying they're, they would help them start businesses now. And we all know that in, in watching what's going on, two hundred thousand dollars is not going to help them start a business. It's a matter of what the economy's doing now, what coal, the demand for coal and things of that nature. And they even add the natural gas severance in, they want to add the natural gas severance also on. So basically what they're doing is to make sure that these rich people become richer, they're willing to give monies that we use for paying our jail bill for these water projects, self-help water projects, all these things we do for the kids in the school, buying them books when they don't have books and things of that nature, they want to do away with all that so they can give these multi-million, multi-million, some billionaires a few hundred thousand more dollars. And, and, and we all know, if you talk to any of these miners around here, they'll tell you they're not going to go back to work. And, you know, and I don't know that taking one little bit of funding that we have to meet a state mandate to give them monies makes absolutely no sense. It is like robbing from the poor to pay the rich. And this kind, you know, this is, this is something that just totally blows my mind that anyone could get up there and have legislature knowing what's going on in Southern West Virginia and say, we need to take away their coal severance money. Because we need to give these guys in New York City more to buy, more money to buy things they want up there. And that, you know, that kind of thinking is the kind of thinking that really hurts people, you know, it, it hurts people, you know. We could have took that million dollars of coal severance money we were getting if we were still getting it and we wouldn't have problems with self-help water projects. I mean, we could, we could do three or four, we wouldn't have problems with six hundred thousand dollars for the, the tank up at Midgiv and things of that nature. So, but, you know, it, it's really, and I, and I think he understood my dismay at what they're doing because it's, it, you know, this thing affects the health of people and you can't give people good water, they're going to continue to be sicker and sicker. And if, and to take that money away, it's one thing to take it away to say, well, we're going to go fight a war, you know, we don't have the money to do it. It's another thing to say, wow, these poor guys, they paid so much in coal severance that they really need a break, you know, and, and no studies that I know have said how many jobs are going to be created by doing that or anything, because there probably won't be any studies because it's not going to create jobs. It's just going to give them back their tax money that that, that legislature required them to pay. Just give it back to them and say, take it wherever you want, do whatever you want to with it. So here we are saying Lincoln County not able to hardly fund their coal bill, or jail bill the way it is and they're going to cut away the major source of our being able to pay that with what they're doing. And I, I just think it's a disgrace and I think that anyone who knows anybody that could talk to their legislatures or whatever ought to say, look, don't, you know, don't do this to people. We've had, we've, we've got all these guys sitting down here without jobs, working mines, people that busted their backs and hurt themselves and wouldn't turn it in to their employer because they're afraid losing their job and then here they get cut off with a naughty day born or whatever. I mean, you know, to me, it's, it's always the wrong way to treat people. And for this legislature, if they go ahead and do this, you know, I, I think they ought to always sign a yellow home, put their votes for that, but that's all I have.
All right. So I have a motion to adjourn until Thursday, March seventeenth.
Um, Monday, oh, yeah, Thursday.
Don't say Thursday.
Monday.
So you know? Well, Monday is the meeting with the public officials.
Oh, good. All right. What is that?
Regular session?
I'll say.
Thursday, March seventeenth. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.